Jeff Darby, Pledge of Allegiance member Vince Maggio, stand. Father, we thank you for this time that you allowed us to come to this place for the business of this city. Father, we thank you for what you've already done, what you're going to do. We thank you for those who serve. Lord, we thank you for their servant's heart. Lord, we pray for those among us who are sick, those who are hurting. Lord, we thank you for the protection of the city, those who live in this city. We thank you for those who provide help in the time of storms in this area. Lord, we ask that you continue to show us how to live holy and to live righteous before you and to do those things that bring honor and glory to your name. We ask you give us direction today, in the name of Christ I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in saying the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery, absent Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the counsel on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed sergeant-at-arm has been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting. This special meeting is a combination of items from the June 20th regular meeting that was postponed due to the state of emergency declared by the governor, Bossier Parish Police Jury, and the mayor Chandler due to the storms that moved through our area on June 16th, 2023, and also items added for the June 27th, 2023 special meeting. Bid items from the June 20th postponement will be opened and read at the July 5th, 2023 regular meeting.
The chair will accept an approval motion of the minutes of June 6, 2023, regular meeting, and dispense with the reading.
Summate.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments? Cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any additions?
There's no additions to the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion we approve today's agenda?
Second.
Motion is second for the agenda. Any comments?
Motion carries. Public hearing, actions on unfinished business, adopt an ordinance to approve change order number six and number seven and number eight for the Walter Obigbe Carriage Way Phase Two project with J.B. James Construction LLC for an increase in the amount of $289,099.22 using the 2018 LCDA bond fund. Final reading.
Summate.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond, second. Mr. Maggio, did we omit special guests or ceremony?
There are.
There's none?
There weren't any on this meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
The ones that we had from the previous meeting have all rescheduled.
Okay. Discussion? Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance recognizing the attached list of marshal vehicles surplus to the needs of the city of Bossier City. Final reading.
Summate.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second. Mr. Maggio, end of discussion. It's open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order two for the 2021 citywide striping project. Final reading.
Summate. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, second. Mr. Williams, discussion, counsel? Comments? Let's cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve change order number two for the citywide improvements Phase Two project for a total contract price of $1,118,879.21. Final reading.
All right.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second. Mr. Maggio, discussion, counsel?
Is that Mr. Maggio or Mr. Smith?
It was both of us.
Oh.
Okay. We don't want you to not get your credit. And the floor is open for comments. Let's cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached First Amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the state of Louisiana, Louisiana Department of Economic Development, Bossier Parish Police Jury, Cyberspace Innovation Center, Inc., DBA Cyber Innovation Center, and General Dynamics Information Technology, Inc. Final reading.
Summate. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, second. Mr. Maggio, Mr. Hammond, discussion? And the floor is open. Let's cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes on all property subject to taxation by the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, for the year 2023, and providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof. Final reading.
Sorry.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second. Mr. Smith, and discussion? Ms. Williamson is here or no? Just, if you would, just for the purpose of the record, making sure that the good folks of Bossier know that there's no increase in their taxes.
Yes, sir. For the record, the rates are the same as 2022, no increase.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing for reprogramming of CDBG funds.
So we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh.
No, you just do it.
You just do it.
Hi, Mr. Brown.
How y'all doing? We're proposing to move 10 small amounts of funds from 10 public services sub recipients that they didn't spend it. A lot of it was because of COVID restrictions and things through the last few years, and we're proposing to move those funds, just about $30,000 into the lead-based paint program so we can, you know, keep that program and the housing rehab program going at full speed, because we spent quite a bit of our lead money already. And we're also proposing to move $40,000 from the coronavirus funds out of our admin costs or funds to the community services, special needs transportation fund. They, we gave, we had proposed to give them $15,000 originally, and they couldn't find a good use for that, but they do really need a new van. Their van's about to lay down in the road, and so they, we're reprogramming this, another $40,000 in there to give them enough to buy, I think it's an 18-seat van.
What agency is that again?
Bossier Community Services.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item today? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
New business, adopt a resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022 action plans for community development block grant funds, and the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, Public Law 116-1360, CARES Act, first and final reading.
Summate. Second.
Mr. Smith made the motion, second. Mr. Williams, second. End of discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to repeal ordinance 76 of 2019. First reading.
Mr. President, I can make a motion to continue number two till August 16th.
The next meeting in August, it would be the first or the 15th?
15th, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion made by Mr. Williams to continue item number two, second, Mr. Smith, discussion, counsel?
Hey, guys, can I put in here just a second? Now, I've written y'all letters, I've texted, I mean emailed y'all, and we've talked about this over and over again. Why do we gotta hold up? Why we gotta put it off again?
I don't remember getting an email.
Yes, sir. We emailed everybody. Yes, sir. Emailed everybody. I've come and talked to everybody, and I talked to you yesterday or the day before.
You told me it was gonna be on the agenda. We didn't talk about the ins and outs of it, though.
I know, but I mean, why, we've been talking about this for a while. Why are y'all holding it off again? Keep on putting it off, keep on putting it off.
So we can talk some more about it?
So this whole time, y'all haven't talked about it?
Not with you personally, no. And we may want to talk.
I don't have a vote, sir. I'm talking about y'all, the guys that voted on this.
And we hadn't talked, I haven't talked to everybody about it, no. I don't know if they have.
Any other discussion on this item? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Wait, but I'd like my CIO to come up and speak some. Thank you.
I know the motion is to postpone this, but do you want to share some information from our perspective? Based on the city charter, ordinance 76 of 2019, in its original form and as amended, is invalid for the following reasons. The mayor is exclusively given the authority to appoint or remove any city employees, and the charter also prohibits the council from dictating the appointment or removal of any city employees. In section 4.06 of the charter, it states that the mayor shall have the authority to appoint, suspend, or remove any city employee, and shall direct and supervise the administration of all departments. The only employees that are subject to council approval are listed in the charter, and those are the department heads. It also allows the mayor, not the council, to authorize appointed city employees to hire within their respective departments. Not only does the charter give the mayor the authority over city employees, including their hiring, it also specifically prohibits the council from participating in the appointment or removal of any city employee in section 3.08. The statement's been made that ordinance 76 of 2019 is necessary for checks and balances. However, checks and balances already exist, and you'll see an example of that when our finance director presents the monthly report at the end of this meeting. This report is required in section 6.05 of the charter. It includes budgeted and actual expenditures and revenues, and not only does it include the financials, it also includes a staff update by the Manning report. The council has the authority to appropriate funds, which is done through the adoption of the annual budget and budget amendments. And the council's approval of the budget authorizes the mayor, as the chief executive officer of the city, to expend those budgeted funds for that fiscal year. In the city charter and in state law, the office of the mayor is recognized as the chief executive officer of the city and is tasked with overseeing the day-to-day operations of the city. Hiring employees falls within the day-to-day operations and thus falls under the mayor's authority. To be clear, the mayor is not asking to exceed the authority granted to him by the charter. We recognize that any positions that exceed the approved budget, including the Manning report, require approval of the city council by ordinance. The city charter vests the council and mayor with different powers to create separation and balance of power, which is essential for good government. We've spent a great deal of time discussing and researching this issue. Multiple Louisiana attorneys general have issued opinions that deem ordinances that infringe upon the authority granted to the mayor, they are invalid. There's also legal precedents from Louisiana Supreme Court that supports our position. And additionally, before asking you to repeal this ordinance, Mayor Chandler obtained a legal opinion specific to Bossier City from an outside attorney who also confirmed that ordinance 76 of 2019 violates the charter, and therefore it is invalid. Currently, there are 14 departments, excluding fire and police, that have a total of 27 vacancies. These other departments provide essential services to our citizens. Denying the mayor the authority to hire employees to fill these vital roles is a disservice to the citizens that we all serve. We are asking that you repeal ordinance 76 of 2019 and allow the mayor to fulfill his responsibilities and obligations to the citizens of Bossier City.
Mr. President, may I make a comment?
Sure.
If we have 27 vacancies, which I believe the Manning report says that, all 20, or we have 36 vacancies.
I excluded fire and police based on the amendment you did.
Those 27 employees should have already had resolutions come before this council to advertise those positions. If those department heads have not asked for the budgetary authority to move forward in hiring, that's frankly on the department head. That's.
But they have asked. The budgetary, budget authority was granted in the annual budget that was approved.
All right, so let's talk about the annual budget. And I really, I had no desire to talk about this. I feel like we've spent an astronomical amount of time and money on something that literally does not impact this city at all. But since we're gonna talk about it, let's talk about four months ago, five months ago, and Ms. Phyllis can pull the ordinance up so we can get accurate dates for the record. There was a resolution that came before this council, just like every other meeting, we have resolutions to hire somebody for a position, that did not exist in the city budget. However, the resolution that came before this council said that there was no change to the budget, that the position was there, that it was a net neutral to our operating budget. But had that been passed and had that person been hired, that would have altered the budget because that position did not exist. And when it was.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And when it was found out that that position didn't exist, we did not authorize that, and that employee was never hired. However, it was only caught because a resolution was turned into the city council. It was not caught by the finance director. It was not caught by the department head that authored the resolution, and it was not caught by the mayor's office. It was only caught by this city council, and it prevented us from having to hire somebody and then eventually lay that person off because we didn't do our due diligence. And that is all this budgetary restriction does, is to make sure, give an extra set of eyes that we are not hiring somebody that is not budgeted. And if it's... And the fact of the matter is, it is a resolution. So if somebody quits today while we're in this council meeting, or they're terminated, that department head can turn a resolution in to be read in two weeks at the next meeting, and the very next day, they can then proceed and hire. If there is one position in this city that will completely derail the whole operation of the city over 13 days, 14 days, then we need to reevaluate who we have as department heads, and we need to reevaluate how we have things structured because one position should not derail the entire operation of the city of Bossier.
So I will say on the position that you're talking about, that the resolution came forth, I sat in all of the budget meetings, and that was a misunderstanding in converting a part-time position to full-time, but there was no change to the budget. It would not have impacted the budget because the impression was, the understanding was that was going, it was gonna be net neutral. It was in the staffing, the way part-time and full-time were classified.
But correct me if I'm wrong, we paid different amount as far as benefits.
It was two part-time positions for one full-time, and it didn't translate correctly on the Manning report.
The fact of the matter, I don't think anybody was trying to do anything nefarious back then. I think it was just an oversight and a mistake, but it was a mistake that was caught that, and frankly, I didn't sit on this council back in 2008, but Mr. Darby, Mr. Williams, Mr. Montgomery did. And they had to make a pretty difficult decision back then. A decision that I know they didn't want to have to make, and a decision that I know they promised themselves they would never get into this situation again. And I care an awful lot about the city of Bossier City, an awful lot, and I never want to have to be in this chair and have to make that decision. And I think that anything we can do to help mitigate that, we're not telling the mayor not to hire, we're just trying to make sure that mistakes don't happen again. Because at one point in time in 2008, mistakes happened. In 2023, a mistake almost happened. And so all we're saying is, let's just work together so we don't have to lay a good person off. Because these are real people that we're talking about here.
Absolutely, they are. But that still doesn't give the council the authority to infringe on the mayor's authority that's granted to him by the charter. And the, I mean, the Budget Act is very clear, any variances, the mayor is required by state law and by charter to bring anything that's gonna be, that's gonna require an amendment to the budget, has to come before the council. If it's hiring an additional person, if the budget is going to be short, if any additional money has to come before the council in the form of an ordinance. But the day-to-day operations, it is, we had a meeting that was supposed to be scheduled for last week that got postponed, and there was a hiring position. So that, they, in effect, three weeks now. The job market is incredibly competitive right now to retain people or to get them in the door. We don't pay the highest wages. And so when somebody is looking for a job, they need to be able to be hired and get a paycheck as soon as possible. And it does create unnecessary delays. It creates additional paperwork on our department heads when they have to get the resolutions and they have to get them submitted in order to make the agenda deadline. So it's just, it's frankly a violation of the charter, and it's unnecessary.
Mr. President, I will be, I will be opposing this today. I'll be opposing it in six weeks. So I don't care, we can make a, we can vote on it today or not. I will still be opposing this because I think it's in the best interest of the city.
For a council member to speak now, Mr. Williams or Mr. Hammond?
Well, Phyllis, didn't we do something, an ordinance back in 2010 when all this happened?
Yes, sir. There was an ordinance that was done in 2010. That ordinance was repealed in 2018.
To do another one.
And then that ordinance, and then another one was passed with the 2018 ordinance, and then there was an ordinance that was passed in 2019 that repealed the 2018 ordinance and changed some things with it, and that was what the latest one was until the 63 of 2023 was just passed.
So it was basically the same thing, though?
Pretty much, they're all the same. There were some, you know, one of them talked about holiday issues, you know, the previous administration was giving holidays and declaring holidays that weren't approved in the, in the holiday book that the, in the book that the council does for as far as holidays. They were giving off days that weren't approved. And then there was the other administration, the previous administration had canceled a council meeting on their own authority. And so that's what, you know, the 2019 ordinance reflected those issues as well.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe y'all just don't want another set of eyes looking at things. And we're gonna continue to look daily, you know, we're gonna continue to look. You know, I sat right there with Mr. Darby sitting in 2009, and we laid people off. We had people sitting there, wives crying because they're losing their jobs, you know, because somebody else screwed up. And that's why we did it. It's just another set of eyes, you know. And I really, you know, until you get, I guess, an attorney general's opinion about this ordinance or whatever, you know, I'm still gonna oppose it.
And I have all of the opinions that I will gladly share. You also got the opinion from the outside council.
I mean, we had, listen, we got a lot of new people, the mayor, you, a lot of people. I don't think everybody understands the budget yet. I really don't. You don't learn it in two years.
There's no doubt that the council, that is, the budget oversight is the responsibility of the council, but the hiring is the responsibility of the mayor.
Well, we give the, we give the fire and police authority, and that was the one, the main ones that needed to be done right now, you know?
How is the mayor, how can you grant authority to appointed department heads that you don't give to the mayor?
We're not hiring anybody.
Let's try not to, let's try not to debate the issue like this. I'm going to give Mr. Hammond a chance to speak, and we're gonna move on on this issue.
Yeah, I mean, like y'all, y'all just brought that up. We gave the fire and police the authority to do that. I think until we get, I think we need to request an opinion of the attorney general, and I think that until we do that and get the full opinion on where this council has to stand on this, if we are in violation of the charter, everything else, probably the next meeting, we're gonna have to repeal the authority that we gave the police and fire to go out and hire their own people if we're not giving that authority to the administration until we get, until we get a valid opinion from the attorney general, I think is the only one that can, not an outside counsel. It needs to go straight to the attorney general's office.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Nottingham.
Well, if y'all against it, I mean, if y'all against it, why don't y'all go ahead and vote?
We're gonna move on on this issue, but I want to say this before we move on. In 2008, 2009, the only reason the administration come before this council to give monthly update is because we implemented that process. It wasn't there before. It's because of what happened, we get those updates every month. It wasn't there before. That's the check and balance. It was done by this council. Some of you guys were not on the council at the time, but we were, and that's the only reason we get those updates, because we all get to know the ins and out of the budget and where we are. And so we have check and balances, and that's what we're supposed to have. And I think we've done a good job in maintaining that, honestly. So we have a motion and a second. Did I open the floor for anybody else to comment? Okay. All right. Please cast your vote, counsel.
No, we ran them with the motion.
This is the motion to continue to the August 15th, 2023. This is the motion to continue. So if this motion fails, it will go back to the original one if someone wants to make a motion for that item. If it passes, then it'll continue until August 15th.
Okay. Please cast your vote.
It's continued to August 15th. Counsel, do you want a resolution on the agenda to ask for an attorney general's opinion? I mean, is that what you were asking me to do, Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Introduce an ordinance to contract Shreveport Communications to provide maintenance for a variety of city systems. First reading.
Summate. Second.
Okay, Smith made the motion second, Mr. Williams. Discussion.
Um, yeah, Ms. Williamson, is this going to affect um. Any of the budgets or is this just coming out of police and fires reading down here on the bottom what they're going to be? What they're going to be doing or is this going to be for citywide?
It, it's citywide, a large chunk of it is police and fire, but the expenditures are budgeted.
Okay. So with this agreement that they're doing, they're going to put our tower back up for free down at Station Four?
Hmm, okay.
Vehicle that hit it had no insurance.
Imagine that.
And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a recreation maintenance worker one and backfilling any position this may create for parks and recreation, first and final reading.
Tell me. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Hammond and second, Mr. Williams, end of discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Elect a city council president effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jeffrey as our next council president.
A second. Any other nominees?
We have discussion now?
We can discuss. So that's many reason not to do it? Okay, we have Mr. Jeffrey, the nominee for president twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four of the council, please cast your vote.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, July first starting, anyone would like to deny this man this opportunity to become the president of council? Okay.
Big, big favor, that's what it is.
All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Elect a city council vice president effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a nomination of Mr. Chris Smith for um, vice president.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Hammond. Nominate Mr. Chris Smith, councilman at large for vice president, starting July first, any comments?
Did Mr. Williams second that?
Yeah, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
And the floor is open. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Free and Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Mr. President, may I take a point of personal privilege?
Yes, yes, may I?
Uh. I know as a, as a first-term council member, uh. My first time to be able to serve and so I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for entrusting me. Uh, with a leadership position here and I hope I serve you well over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
You will, you'll be taken out.
They'll vote you out.
Mr. Free would like to make a.
I appreciate your vote of confidence.
Thank you.
For serving.
All right, thank you, sir.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached right-of-entry agreement related to the construction of the new Jimmy Davis Bridge, first reading.
Tell me. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith second, Mr. Williams, discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, um. Mr. Jacobs, this, is this for the lay-down lot?
No.
What, what, what is this for down there?
That's going to come later, that's um, going to be allowed as it's, it's part of a point of entry. For uh, basically planning, surveying, things of that nature, uh, the city has a piece of property. Um, and, and actually. The, if, if you look at the attachment there too, it'll show where this, and that's just granting a right of entry onto that property. Basically for planning, surveying, things of that nature.
Okay, just basically what they've been down there doing?
Correct, and I, I believe the ultimate plan is with the bridge is that ultimately that property will become state property. All that will be expropriated, not from the city, I believe they'll approach the city, you know, due to the project. But it's a, it's just right of entry onto certain other property owned by the state to allow the processes out there. Um, progressing as we speak, surveying, planning, things of that nature. And it's just a, a formalization to allow uh, James Construction full access to the property.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
This should tell everybody that the bridge is still going to happen, so. Nothing occurred in that, that money squandering and stuff, so whatever. So it's all going to happen, the bridge is going to happen.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Has it not popped up? Motion carries. Adopt a resolution ratifying the state of emergency declared in the city of Bojor City by Mayor Thomas H. Chandler. Due to severe weather and power outages that occurred on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, first and final reading.
Tell me.
Motion, Mr. Free second, Mr. Hammond, any discussion? Anyone would like to comment?
Uh, yeah, I, I would. Mr. President, um, I, I would just like to thank um, all, all the department heads that are here, Mr. Rich. Um, Chief Haugen, Chief Zagone, I know he's not here. Um, Jaco, all, all the fire and police that night did a fantastic job. Um, started about one in the morning and I think they ran, I mean, almost for twenty-four hours straight. Um, we, we were hit pretty hard in South Bojor, the Shady Grove, Bel Air, um, South Gate neighborhoods. And um, I would just like to thank them for their professionalism and what they did for the um, the citizens down in District One, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please cast your vote.
Is it showing up on your side?
No, ma'am.
Cause it's not showing up on my side.
We can do voice vote if you'd like.
Yes, let's do a voice vote because it just kicked everybody out.
Uh, all who are in favor of this. Right here, uh.
Aye.
Any opposed? May.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a laborer one due to a resignation in the customer service department, first and final reading.
Tell me. Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Smith, Mr. Williams, end of discussion. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
You'll have to do a voice vote because some of them haven't come back online yet.
All in favor of this, please. Any opposed?
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a recreation maintenance worker one and backfilling any position this may create for parks and recreation, first and final reading.
Tell me. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams second, Mr. Maggio. Um, floor is open for comments. All in favor? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to fill a laborer one position in the solid waste division and an equipment operator position in streets and drainage due to resignations, first and final reading.
Tell me. Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond second, Mr. Maggio.
Uh, just me.
Okay, all right, end of discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Hey, council under reports, um. The mayor has a report that he would like to do on the storm response and then we have uh, Ms. Williamson and then the engineering department. So I'm not sure which order you want to take them in, but.
Okay, all right, council, what is your wishes?
Finance first.
We're doing finance first?
I need to hear that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor Chandler.
Do you have it, Mr. Darby, if not, I have a copy.
I have a copy if you need.
Nope, he's got it.
I think I, they had them. Unless something changed from what you'd said.
No, it's. Yeah, before you, the financials for the month ended May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Page one is revenue by fund, the city is currently thirty percent over budget. The increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to an increase in sales tax revenue distribution to capital in the current year. Riverboat capital fund revenue is down due to a fifteen percent decrease in gaming revenue current year. The majority of the decrease in EMS revenue is due to a decrease of approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand in the ambulance alliance payment. Received May twenty twenty-three compared to the one received May twenty twenty-two. Page two is expenses by fund, the city is currently nine percent under budget. The majority of the increase in water fund expenses is due to an increase in chemicals and electricity for the water treatment plant. EMS fund expenses decreased mainly due to a decrease in the transfer to EMS capital of approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand. For the decreased ambulance alliance payment received May twenty twenty-three compared to May twenty twenty-two. Page three is the sales tax comparative report, sales tax revenue is down one-half of one percent compared to May twenty twenty-two. Page four is the Manning report, there are five more full-time employees than last month. Total full-time employees are thirty-six under budget. There is one more part-time employee than last month and total part-time employees are six under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for May twenty twenty-three has decreased eighty-one percent compared to May twenty twenty-two. Current year-to-date income has increased thirty-seven percent from prior year and is twenty-three percent under budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, net operating income is up eighty-seven percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Patrick is here today? Are you coming? Okay.
Allow me to speak for him, Quentin's out on vacation.
Okay.
And the clicker should be under there. Just push the big button.
Okay, um, quick general overview, you're going to notice some things about this presentation that are a little bit different than the last. And that's mainly that the ongoing design and construction projects are beginning to um, decrease. We've got the uh, LTRI building is now off the docket, but currently we have seventy-two million in ongoing design and construction projects. Uh, sixty-one million of that is under construction with the bulk of that being the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway. Eight projects in the design are bid phase, uh, three projects under construction. And then we have five subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase. Wrong direction. The big button. Here's a recent picture of the Carriageway, um, appreciate y'all's concurrence on the change order today. A project is still ahead of schedule, um, you know, and we could get some, a little better weather. It's still been pretty dry, I think that, that trend will continue. The Highway seventy-one lighting improvements, we still have this on the list, still waiting for poles, nothing has changed there. Um, but I can assure you, as soon as they come in, they will, they will start sprouting up out of the ground. Elm Grove ditch improvements, this is a project we've been working on for quite a while. If you're down in that area, you've seen right there by the Elm Grove uh, Middle School. Where we're working to get some drainage off seventy-one South across some property and, and into. Uh, believe it or not, I think that's Max Bayou back there as well. Um, and that project's, you know, like most in areas, hasn't gone without any surprises. They found some things out there uh, when they started excavating, but it's on schedule and progressing and hope to be done with that here pretty soon. And then private development, you have Edgewood, Edgewater Pass, Canal Place, Unit Number Four, Willow Shoot Ranch Development, the Cove at Bellagio. And Redwood Place, Unit Number Twelve that are uh, currently under, underway. And this little slide here, the lateral B-one drainage ditch improvements, that's up there around the uh, Thirfty Liquor area. It's about ninety-one pers- ninety percent complete, uh, we're working on some easement acquisition there. Uh, what we're calling the Bardo Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements Project, that's the ditch that runs kind of by Two Johns to give you some idea where that's at. Uh, we're in these right-of-entry agreements phase, trying to get all of that done. Uh, Gina in Engineering's been doing a great job with that, we're just about complete with that effort. The twenty twenty-three citywide street improvements, we're showing that at about five percent complete with preliminary plans currently being developed. That's progressing well, we expect to have that complete soon. Uh, we talked about the Elm Grove ditch there, um, the Golden Meadows Turn Lane, Civil Design Group is working on that. Uh, you guys approved um, some additional work there, so we're working to get that all the way to construction uh, plans. Barksdale Boulevard lighting project, we are pressing that, you'll recall is the Full of Love, what we call the Full of Love Lighting Project, Councilman Darby. Um, that's all been approved and paid for, but we have not gotten word from AEP on exactly when they're going to come out and set those poles. We're pressing, they've been a little bit preoccupied lately. Tinsley Parking Lot, uh, we opened bids on that next week and then that'll get under construction. And then we're currently working on city hall security upgrades, y'all appropriated some money for us to get started on that. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Mayor, your presentation.
Uh, would like to ask Lewis Johnson to come up, public information officer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President and members of the council. We're going to um, take just a few minutes, if you would, and share with you a after-action rev- uh, review of the storm. And it's primarily purposes to come back and look at the things that uh, we learned from that, to give a, a report of what we did. Identify things we did well, things we can do better. Also be advised that this action, action review, after-action review has been given to the department heads, administrative staff for the same reason. We wanted to share it with the council also. Uh, we found that and we know that in order to manage an incident successfully, there are a few things that need be in place. One of those things is uh, planning, communication and information, logistics and resources. Now, uh, one of the things that caused this particular storm to uh, be difficult for the entire community is that it was not planned for. They knew we was going to have a storm, but even the um, weather and meteorologists and others did not um, predict that it would be eighty miles an hour and that type of thing. If it's tornadoes, the flood, things like that, we can't plan for and we do plan for. So our primary planning, uh, that we talked about the fact the storm was coming, really was initiated after uh, the, it initiated. So uh, as we look at those things. There we go, uh, we know the success or failure of incidents are based on your level of planning. One of the commitments that the administration have is to continue to work at doing a better job of planning. Uh, this event was unexpected and the impact that it had on our community. Our team was aware of the storm, but not expected to be on that scale. Um, after we began to see the aftermath, the team met, discussed the information that was available at that time. And then began to put personnel and resources into place to try to mitigate it as best we can. Once the impact was realized, planning was intentional and planning was ongoing. And we did the best that we could to communicate that throughout. Communication and information, uh, we prioritize our internal communication, um, and also our external communication. communication. The communication was impacted, obviously, because no one had power. And as we look at the things that we did well, we've also identified some things that we can do better, some areas in which we can improve, and one of the things that we commit is that we're going to make sure we have a stronger and better social media presence to get the information out. Chairman, I mean, Councilman Smith did a good job in assisting that, and we're going to make sure that's our priority as we move forward. But our communication, information was communicated. SWEPCO was in direct communication with our office, speaking nearly directly with our C O, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Nottingham, and whenever Amanda got that information, she made sure that it was put out as relates to how much outage there is, what coverage, when were we expecting to get the power back, and things like that. So SWEPCO is putting that out periodically, and when we got the information, we put the information out as soon as we received it. Information to our citizens, we tried our best to get that out. We have numerous press releases that went out to all of the media outlets. We have those, that information recorded and saved, of course. So we have SWEPCO information that went out. The mayor sent out a press release encouraging safety and patience during the storm. We also had to correct a boil advisory that had come down from the governor that said that we were under a boil advisory, which caused some concern for local businesses. So we put out a press release correcting that. Also, the mayor put out an update of the storm recovery plan, and every media outlet that we have should have received it, including the councilmen, we should hope. When the cooling stations were identified, we identified the need for cooling stations, but getting locations was challenging because many of the places that would have initially been a cooling station was also out of power. I know there were a couple of places, Bel Air being one, where Pastor said that he did not have any power at the time, but as soon as he did, he would be willing to allow to be a cooling station. So those were some of the challenges we found. But once we did identify cooling stations, we were able to get there, set them up, and get them moving, and then get the word out with that also. And debris removal was the same thing, in that once we had the plan for debris removal, we had to coordinate that with Public Works and then make sure we got out the plan as best we could, and we'll look at how we did that in just a moment. Our communications that we used was press releases. We went on the radio as early as Friday, talking about what we were doing and trying to get the word out to our citizens. We attended meetings with local emergency officials, and some of these things everyone else can't really be aware of, but our Public Services Commissioner, Foster Campbell, had a meeting at his office, and in that meeting was the president of SWEPCO. We had our local Homeland Security Directors, the mayor of Shreveport, and Mr. Mayor had his entire administrative staff, and we were all there in order to get the information firsthand, to be informed what was going on, and then to try and forward that information. Also, we did news interviews with the mayor along with our Director of Public Works. When we had questions about debris removal, the television stations came out and actually did stories on site of Bossier City working to remove the debris and giving them information regarding that. We attempted to keep the council as informed as we could in the beginning, and we tried throughout, and we can continue to work and do a better job, but our goal was to try and keep you guys as informed as related to the plan and what was going on, as well to get any input that y'all could share with us also. And lastly, as we look at logistics, we know that major incidents like this cannot be accomplished without resources, cannot be accomplished without communication, cooperation, and support. And once again, the council was very cooperative and very supportive. I said in the meeting this morning with the division heads is that one of the things that I thought was very impressive is that each time I called a councilman to a person, when I called you even just after the storm, asking questions or getting information, you were out in your district. You were right in your district. You were looking and surveying it during that time. So that was impressive as well, and it helped you to see what some of those needs were and give a great appreciation of what was going on. When the needs were identified, Team Bossier worked together to meet those needs, and that being administration, and that being the city council, and overall, all of the city employees. City council was willing to do what was necessary to make sure that the needs were met and approve the necessary resources. Various departments went above and beyond in the areas of working, planning, and addressing the needs of our citizens, and I know better than to start identifying different departments, but I will. As relates to Public Works, they still had to meet their regular schedules. Along with their regular scheduled pickups, they contracted outside help, obviously, to help. Parks and Recreation, that was the first call that I had that morning, so I did not realize how bad it was. So I got a call that the park was closed because of that, and we put out a press release to that effect only to see that everything was closed. So Parks and Recreation, Public Works, public safety, with the police department being out with the traffic and helping with that type of thing, the fire department was out, they had a rookie class in, and all those rookies were out with chainsaws, working to help. We did a story, Rick Rowe came and did a story talking about the fact that they're not just firefighters, but that they're public servants, and with them being public servants at any time, they can be called on to do any number of things. So those people all did a good job, as did all of the citizens, and I mean, all of the employees just did a really good job. A few of the resources that were needed was water, snacks for the cooling stations, and those things were, we were able to accomplish that by simply asking. So we went to Walmart, went to Lowe's. They were very gracious in giving us things that we needed, and this was on Saturday and Sunday, Mr. Mayor. And so as relates to opening up those cooling stations and getting the water and that type of thing, getting the snacks, Mr. Mayor and I literally went to those stores, loaded up the water, and set up those cooling stations as the people were prepared to do that. And other equipment we needed, of course, was manpower, contractors, and public safety played a major role. So overall, we learned a lot from this incident. We learned that we can communicate better, but we're working hard on doing that. We learned that our planning upstream is very important, and it's also important to be as receptive to others as we can to get the information and input that they provide. So this is pretty much a overall review. So after an incident like this, it's important that we ask ourselves, what have we learned from it, and what can we do better? That is why we do the after-action review, so that everyone involved can look at their roles and look at and find an opportunity to improve. We evaluate the things that went well and areas that we can improve, and we do what we're doing now. We come together, we review, we communicate, and we evaluate, and then we kind of report it to see what input or any questions or suggestions that anyone else might have. So as relates to the storm and the after-action review, are there any questions or any comments anyone has regarding that?
Well, I think every district should have a disaster plan, one through five. If one gets hit, the other ones don't get hit, let's go help the one. If five got hit like we did, we all go help each other, but everybody was kind of on its own, you know? But I think if we have each a disaster plan in each district, it would be better. We can help each other. Kind of have a plan going, you know?
I will say, I think the, we don't get a whole lot of hurricane-strength storms up this way, so it was definitely something that we're not accustomed to. And so I think the response to the storm was, while we have areas we could definitely improve, I don't think it was just a disaster either. And so moving forward, as we now clean up, I think it's going to be important, because as I drive through the city, there's still debris everywhere. There's still houses that have debris on the curbs waiting to be picked up. I think that it would be important if we can maybe communicate with the people of Bossier and when we're going to be in their areas. That's something I've kind of been pushing for the last couple of weeks, you know, because we had a truck come through my neighborhood just a couple of days ago, and my next-door neighbor didn't have their tree limbs in their backyard pulled up to their curb yet, and so they missed it. So if it, you know, so I believe they called into the Public Works Office. I believe they've scheduled a time for them to come back, but it's, that's unnecessary backtracking, that if we would have just said, hey, if you live in District One, we'll be here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Have your, have your debris ready. If you're in District Two, we'll be there, you know, the following week. That way, we can be a little bit more organized and make the cleanup a lot quicker.
I appreciate that. Initially, what the goal was, as I appreciated from Mr. Wade, is that he initially went to the hardest-hit areas, and that that is where the bulk of the debris was, and that was where it was most necessary to try and make sure that thoroughfares and things like that was open. So the hardest-hit is where he went first. And even though we put together a schedule, and I agree, that's a good plan. Normally, after an incident like this, in a week or two, you're just not going to have everything picked up. So even if you go through, and they do that during their regular pickup on their regular schedules, it is, they're prepared and understand that they still have to go back through in order to make sure everything is done. But I agree with you that a schedule would be effective as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much, sir.
I do want to commend the administration for the consistency in communication. I did get calls from yourself, and I spoke with the mayor a couple of times, and I think under the circumstances, you did the best you could do with the worst situation we could be in temporarily. But, but I don't say that you didn't do a good job in trying to do what you've done for the citizen of Bossier, and I appreciate it because it was a task unexpected.
Yeah.
And you tried to meet that challenge to the best of your abilities, and I just commend you, Mayor, for your leadership and the leadership of your staff. And Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you. That being said, oh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I myself want to thank all my departments, all the workers of the city. When you're out there and all the, you know, the disaster and all that kind of stuff, it's great to see all these guys out. Lewis Cook, I seen Lewis Cook, looked like somebody got a water hose and watered him down. He was sweating so bad. I think he changed clothes three times that day. I mean, it was hot, and they're all out there trying to get the roads cleared. And, you know, for, first of all, get the roads cleared so we can get the ambulances and fire departments to houses that people needed help. And I want to thank Lewis Johnson for helping me get the water out to all these cooling stations, and also I'd like to thank them for getting the generators, Steve Ford and all them getting generators for Shady Grove. Everybody worked together. That's what, it was amazing how everybody worked together. Being Rochabock didn't get no sleep, and I appreciate you for doing that, sir. I mean, Amanda did a lot too with SWEPCO, trying to get things going with SWEPCO. Everybody in, it works for the city. It was so great to see them people work together to get this done, and I thank them so much. I appreciate them very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
And also, ordinance, ordinance 76, 2019.
I look forward to talking to y'all again about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. So this being my last meeting to chair, I want to appreciate our city clerk for the year that she has served with me to get some things done, and believe it or not, she goes beyond the call of duty most of the time. She's very, very resourceful, and she's always willing to dig in and to help and to research, and we can't do what we do without her. So I just want to appreciate Ms. McGraw for all that she does. And then I want to thank the council members who worked with me in my tenure as chair and having the commitment that we are still active, and I appreciate how cooperative you guys have been throughout my tenure, and I want to thank the mayor administration and the mayor for cooperating throughout my tenure as chair. I think we have a good working relationship. I think we have a good rapport. I think it can be built upon, and it's going to happen. We got two more years to make it happen. I appreciate everyone. All right, this meeting stands adjourned.